Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our business meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have one member missing. She's under the weather today, so Uta will not be here, but we can carry on. Additions, deletions.
Do you have anything?
Have nothing. With that, like a motion for approval of the agenda as stated.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda stands. Okay, public comment on agenda items? Three minutes. Name and address. Oh, sir, how are you this evening?
Good evening. Thank you. Kevin Flavin, Grozil Park Lane. Tonight, we're, I believe, going to vote on a new finance director. And I had a couple comment questions. What are the job responsibilities and scope of work for the new finance director? How do they compare to what our former finance director did and what finance directors do in other communities? How does our finance director's compensation compare to other communities with similar positions? The original advertised compensation for the finance director position was eighty to ninety thousand dollars, I believe. And why was the position not re-advertized when the compensation was changed to a hundred and fifteen to start and a hundred and twenty-five thousand after 24 months plus possible cost of living adjustments by the board? I'm sure that the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar difference would have encouraged other applicants to apply possibly. And how is the board going to pay for this substantial salary increase, given the budget was so tight last year? I'm making these comments about the process, not the person that's being considered. And how does the total compensation, including benefits such as the defined benefit pension and health care retirement, compare to other peer communities? Do we have a compensation guide for all the positions in the township? And if we don't have a guide on what we're paying for positions, what happens to the township manager and other managers if the finance director is making more than they are? We'd like to see, show the total compensation for our community compared to our peers. And could Grozil have saved some money by outsourcing some of the finance director's My understanding is that one person was offered a position as finance director and turned the position down because the compensation, because of compensation. And what I'm wondering is, what did that person ask for? And did we offer them the same compensation that we're offering the people, the person tonight? Fifteen thousand plus a nine percent bump up in 24 months. It's, we really do need to have salary ranges. And I believe I, as part of the Taxpayers Association, asked that the meeting be scheduled with the finance director candidates so that we could see if they were, if they had ideas on what would be beneficial to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? Seeing none. Oh, Brian, you know, could you sit in the audience? It would mean much easier.
I could, if you'd like.
Yeah, you'd like to. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right. I do have three tonight, slightly lengthy, so hold on. It may take a second here. First one, Tim O'Connor, Island Boulevard. Dear Board members, this comment concerns Action item number 10, the promotion of Sergeant Kevin Counts to Lieutenant effective immediately. I ask that, prior to confirmation, the board receive his full commitment to serving our community as a police officer for the foreseeable future, or does he have other career ambitions such as running for a public office? Recent years have seen many changes in the police department, and I'm looking for stability so that we don't have to do this again in a year or two. Next up, Laurent Chapuis, East River Road. Dear Board, I am writing to you about tonight's vote regarding Sergeant Kevin Counts' promotion. Sergeant Counts swore to protect the citizens of the departments in which he serves, and yet he is now on the records for two serious lapses of character which have profoundly affected the lives of two innocent civilians. As a son of a former police, chief of police, I consider him unfit to be promoted. One, while serving the Detroit Police Department, he took part in actions as callous. They were the subject of a lawsuit. There's a link here. He left the department to join another at a lower rank. Two, earlier this year, he was the subject of multiple complaints concerning his leadership role in shamelessly abusing the character of a newly hired teacher in the Grozil school system, to the point she had no other choice than to resign. Supporting his promotion would be rewarding the very kind of behavior that destroys the reputation of police departments. Grozil needs not be known for thuggish police behavior. We need officers who stand up to defend the defenseless, not lead mobs accusing them baselessly. I implore you to vote no to Sergeant Counts' promotion. Your duty is first and foremost to the citizens of Grozil. Our police department does not need thugs to succeed in its mission. And last, Erica Chapuis, East River Road. Dear Township Board, is my understanding that Sergeant Kevin Counts is being considered for promotion to lieutenant. I am against the officer's promotion. In my opinion, as a community member, having witnessed the trouble he deliberately stirred up for political purposes, he does not deserve this promotion. I do not trust him to remain focused on his job as a police officer due to his political ambitions and his political position, as written by him on social media and verbalized by him at the February 28th school board meeting, has proven inflammatory and damaging within our community. He managed to stir up enough trouble on his Facebook page and within the community over a rumor about a new young female music teacher that there was a significant threat at our public schools. Is good police officer's duty not to stir up trouble and rumor, but he ignored, conventionally accepted good behavior, instead spreading the rumor through his Facebook page? I don't need to remind you of the events, and I hope I don't have to remind the board that what ensued was an investigation in and of our community by the Michigan State Police and the FBI. It was an alarming and completely unnecessary term of events, and I blame Sergeant Counts for the ruckus in this normally entirely peaceful community. He should have downplayed any rumors he might have had instead of spread them unfounded or unproven as far as, as wide as he could. This is not even the first he has been based on accusation of a lack of facts. I'm sorry, yeah, accusation of a lack of facts. He has previously caused an innocent man to spend seven months in detention in another community. To be blunt, I'm surprised he was even hired in Grozil at all. Unfortunately, those in our police community did not see fit to reprimand Sergeant Counts, citing his First Amendment rights while never considering the First Amendment rights of the music teacher. And now they propose to promote him. I lost trust in our police department from the results of the investigation, if there ever was one. I will never regain it if Sergeant Counts is actually promoted in the face of the damage he caused this community. Please do not promote Sergeant Counts. His past and his present behavior proves that he is not fit to be lieutenant. That is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Moving on. Oh, we have another one. No, no, come up to, if you're gonna speak, and remember it's a comment, not a question. Please. Bill?
Bill Hile, I live on East River Road. I'm surprised at what this circumstance has brought about, and at least in my thought. I'm talking about reference to Coven Counts. I had a thought on the other, but I want to set that aside. It's my understanding normally with recommendations in the police department, they're at the recommendation of the police commission. Those people, to my best experience, know officers more intimately than the public does. They would be more intimately aware of these various allegations and what investigations, if any, were made by the state police. If Officer Counts is there by, the state police must have found reason to let him stay there. And I don't hear anybody saying anything about the fact that those people were there with better access to information. I am shocked at that variance in opinion. I've, remember, I can't remember the incident, but he has helped me once. My memory from him, at least in terms of feelings about what went on, were favorable. But I just had to express that, and I think that people have to realize when decisions are made, they're made from a variety of viewpoints, and awareness of that is appropriate.
Now I think that's it. You're welcome. Consent agenda, Dave?
Thank you. This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-058, which consists of minutes of the September 11th, 2023 regular meeting, check registers dated through September 15th, 2023, early voting site approval resolution, declare surplus a fire department vehicle, declare surplus a police department vehicle, appropriate vehicles, recreation department and general fund, and a board of review appointment.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Thank you for that. Any questions on the consent? Seeing none. We have a consent agenda, 23-058, which consists of the minutes of the September 11th, 2023 regular meeting, the check register dated through September 15th, 2023, early voting site approval resolution, declare surplus fire department vehicles, declare surplus police department vehicle, appropriate vehicles for rec, recreation department and general fund, and an appointment to the board of review. All in favor? Aye. Roll call. Oh, yes, that's right. We have a resolution. I had it written down, and I still went to that. Roll call, vote. Kyle?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Jamison?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The consent agenda passes. Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Two for two. So much for my notes that I have down here, Brian, and then the resolution, so. Action items. It appears we have, we just have some people today that are gonna go on forever with action items, and we're gonna start with Mr. Carl Bledcher, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Action item number one, Fire Marshal Hire. I move that the Grozil Township Board approve the hire of Robert Roscoe to the position of Fire Marshal under the terms and conditions listed in the attached offer of employment.
Support.
Under history, purpose, and explanation, you'll recall the last Fire Marshal, Kevin Langley, resigned recently to accept a position in Traverse City. The fire department is in need of filling the Fire Marshal's position. The Fire Marshal provides the citizens of Grozil with full-time EMS and fire response during the daytime hours and nighttime. The Fire Marshal provides the Grozil Fire Department with necessary full-time staffing to continue the operations of the fire department in fire prevention, fire causation, fire mitigation, education, and training. And I wholeheartedly recommend, as does the Grozil Fire Commission, the promotion and retention of Robert Roscoe to that position. And Mr. Roscoe is here tonight, and it gives me great pleasure to recommend you for this position, Robert.
Okay, comments? I too, I know, I don't know Bob that well, but I do know him from the fire department, and I've heard nothing but good things about him. If the Fire Commission and Fire Department give us that recommendation, I certainly see no reason not to, and I would congratulate him if we have the vote today.
And one final point is that there were three applicants, internal applicants, for the position. The three gentlemen are all members, long-term members. I consider five years to be long-term in this day and age. Many marriages don't last that long. But that Mr. Roscoe was considered to be just, with his experience and number of years that he had, just a little bit of a notch above, and that's why he was selected by the commission and the panel that reviewed it, and I think he will do a tremendous job. A great job. He has some big shoes to fill. But Bob, that's your problem, not ours, so I hope that the rest of the board supports this action.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none. We have a motion before us that the Grozil Township Board hereby approve the hire of Robert Roscoe to the position of Fire Marshal under the terms and conditions listed in the attached offer of employment. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, sir. Mr. Fire Mar, Fire Marshal Roscoe, if you would step forward, please. How you doing?
All right. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of Fire Marshal?
And the office of Fire Marshal?
And in for the township of Grozil?
And for the township of Grozil?
County of Wayne?
County of Wayne?
And state of Michigan?
And state of Michigan?
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
There you go. We got a pen. Have a sign.
Would you like to say some words? Please do.
You sign right there.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Carl, are you done? And a few words?
Just getting warmed up.
Okay. Action item number two, sir, if you would.
Action item number two is the Public Safety Overhead Door Replacement Bid Award. I hereby move, upon the recommendation of the Grozil Fire Commission, that the Township Board of Trustees approve the bid award for replacement of bottom panels on overhead doors and hardware to West Metro Door in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Under the history, purpose, and explanation, the overhead doors have been seriously deteriorating with rust and damage from salt, which cannot be repaired. The damage is primary to the bottom panels. The damage affects the door's ability to open during times of emergency. Replacing the bottom panel is significantly more cost effective than replacing the entire door. You'll note and recall during our, one of our recent meetings, there was an award to have the roof painted and some other work done there because the building is some thirty years old. And to have those doors for thirty years is rather remarkable, but salt, like Father Time, catches up to all of us, and the salt has done a lot of damage to the bottom panels of that. I do want to note that with respect to this issue, the overhead door replacement bid award, as well as the other two actions to be taken to support the maintenance of the building, there was just one offer that came in, one bid that came in in response to what we did. I spoke with Township Manager Thiel about that today, and he indicated that Fire Chief Camilleri in the township had posted the requests for bids, requests for proposals pursuant to the township's formal bid process. With this bid and with the other two items, the matter was published in all of the proper channels, published of record, Mitten, which is a Michigan basic bid system, and this was the only response that we had. The same is true of the other items I'm bringing to the board tonight. So while we did have a solid bid, it was the only bid. We properly published, requested, and I think that the best explanation for that is, whereas three years ago, people were starving for business in the business community, times are fat out there, and they pick and choose what they want to do. And this is an opportunity for us to have the door panels replaced, but it is not an opportunity to have it done with the result of a half a dozen bids. So everything went out according to the township rules. There's just not a lot of people out there that are interested in coming and replacing panels. So on that note, I ask the board to approve this bid package.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. We have a motion based upon the recommendation of the Fire Commission that the Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the bid award for the replacement of the bottom panels on overhead doors and hardware to West Metro Door in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good. The department gets, will get their doors fixed. Thank you. Okay, Carl.
Action item number three, Public Safety Exterior Door Painting Bid Award. I move that the Township Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation from the Fire Commission, the Grozil Township Board of Trustees approve the bid award for repainting ten overhead doors, four side entry doors, and twenty-two overhead lights to Scheffler Painting in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight dollars. Support?
Thank you, Kyle.
History and purpose of this is similar to the prior item. Overhead doors have not been painted since originally installed in 1990. Bottom panels are to be replaced without paint. Therefore, all do's, all doors with new panels are in need of repainting to prevent further deterioration.
Again, pretty straightforward. It's just, you know, things wear out, things need to be taken care of, and it appears that it is time for these.
Bids were solicited, and same program, one bid was received.
Other comments? Seeing none. Based upon the recommendation of the Fire Commission, the Grozil Township Board of Trustees approves the bid award for repainting ten overhead doors, four side entry doors, and twenty-two overhead lights to Scheffler Painting in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight dollars. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We will get our doors painted.
Action item number four, while we're on this subject of
Gauntlet here.
On the subject of forcible entry trainer door purchase, I move that the, based upon the recommendation of the Fire Commission, the Township Board of Trustees approve the purchase of a forcible entry trainer door from Fire Innovation, Inc. in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Under history, purpose, and explanation, the fire department has no equipment for training volunteers on the very difficult job of forcible entry through metal doors. Many commercial buildings and all the doors at the schools have metal doors. Entry through these doors is a difficult task and requires in-depth and frequent training. This training equipment will provide the firefighters the necessary skill set to forcibly enter through these metal doors for search and rescue, and will last the fire department in excess of thirty years. To further comment on that, it is something that, a new day and age, we have new security doors in light of all of the tragic shootings. We have new security doors that we did not have thirty years ago for many of the businesses. doors that we did not have 30 years ago for many of the businesses. And what this equipment does is allow new volunteers and even older volunteers that want to brush up, the opportunity to hone their skills about opening metal doors that were so infrequently used three decades ago. This is necessary. Department has an irregular amount of turnover in the volunteers that come and go as people move, careers change, people retire from the department. The 30-year life expectancy in these doors will allow the members of the fire department to receive the training and have the refresher courses necessary to allow them to do it. And the beautiful thing is, is that once we purchase these doors that weigh about a ton and a half and they're on wheels, that we can replace the hinges that are inevitably damaged with a forced entry by allowing them to be replaced for just a few bucks. And so we'll be able to get many years of service out of this. Hopefully be one of those training exercises that you never have to use, but if you do, you're prepared and you're able to go in. From the worst-case scenario, if there's a fire, an active shooter or anything else, we have people that are prepared to breach and go in and take care of business. And I would ask the board to approve this purchase.
Just a note, these are, this is all in our board packets, but this one is from the Equipment Millage Fund, whereas the previous ones were from COVID funds, correctly?
That is correct.
Other comments? Will this be used with other departments? Will there be cross-training with other departments?
One of the, one of the beautiful things about mutual aid is there is sharing of equipment. When you look at this particular equipment, and that's what I view the training entry door as, it weighs about a ton and a half, Tim, if I'm right, if I recall correctly, between 3,000 and maybe even 3,500. And by the time you move that, it's easier to bring the mountain to the training than it is to take this mountain to the training people or the people to the training as opposed to trying to move that kind of equipment. There is an open door policy with fire departments down river. If they need help, they need something they can come and train. I do not believe, and again, it's welcome to police and fire, I do not believe that it is cost-effective to try and break this thing down, put it on Tim's truck, and then take it over to Riverview or Trenton or some other place, reassemble it and do that. So I would look forward to maybe some of the departments coming here and learning how to use a piece of equipment that has some very serious implications for the community and can be used effectively. Tim, do you have any comments on that or anything you want to say?
If you, if you're going to comment, please.
Members of the board, my name is Tim Lorraine. I'm the deputy fire chief. The item in question will have a three-decade, approximately a three-decade lifespan. One of the things that we, I can guarantee you that we can get into any building. It just may take us a while, but that's not the idea behind this. The idea behind this is to become very proficient in getting into these buildings so that we can get in quicker. The state is going to require, whether you're a volunteer firefighter or a career firefighter, that there's going to be continued education just like there is in EMS. As of right now, there are nine courses in what we call Smoke, which gives us continuing education. When it's in Smoke, when it's in, in the website, that means it's funded by fireworks money. We can put on training classes for ourselves. There will be, and then we can invite other departments in, but Lansing will then pay us and we can recoup some of our cost to replace hinges, to replace locks, and the items that we will be breaking to get into that door. So it's down the road, like I said, right now there's nine credit courses and we will be required to do continuing education in the fire service just as we are in EMS, and that'll help us with that, too. Thank you.
Was there any thought of having the other departments go in on this and sharing it?
Tim, do you want to address that?
Well, then it would be possession. So no, that has not been, that was not addressed.
Okay. Good enough. Other, other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion based upon the recommendation of the fire commission that the Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the purchase of a forcible entry trainer door from the, from Fire Innovations, Inc. in the amount of $12,585. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have a door. Thank you. Carl, thank you for your number of action items. All right, now we move to a new group of action items for recreation. Kyle, would you please do the honors?
Thank you. Yes, as a former recommissioner, I'm proud to bring these as Uta's out tonight. I have before me for action number, action item number five, a recommendation to accept an award shelter assembly bid to Baird &amp; Lawler Building Company in the amount of $9,868.
Second?
The history, purpose and explanation of this one is this project will establish a new horse shelter with the supplies that were previously purchased and have been stored at Centennial Farm. I know we have Chad and Zaid here if there are any questions. I followed a little bit of this. I do know that this was agreed to in our lease with the Luton Riding Academy, so I'm happy that we're meeting the terms of our lease and that this will get built for them. Yeah, I'll leave it there unless anyone has any questions.
Zaid, do you have any, anything you want to add to that? Does that pretty much take care of it?
So I just want to talk about this action item and the next couple ones. So the actual funds for these items are, it's not going to, anything above our actual millage. We have a couple of funds in the recreation department funds that I was able to move some money around. One being a purchase of a vehicle that we had funds from. Now we're able to, we're going to be going forward with getting one from the fire department. And then we had some money put aside to kind of update the docs in the marina that after speaking to my doc master and the township manager, we don't actually need to do. It's kind of more a just-in-case kind of situation with that money. So I was able to move those funds around to fund these next three projects. So, but other than that, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, but I just kind of wanted to explain where the actual money is coming from and then it's, it's not any kind of extra money coming out of the recreation budget that we'll be using.
Right. And as Kyle pointed out, this was something that was in the Luton contract and it just hasn't gotten done until this point.
Yes, that's correct.
And this is, what this is, this is for, actually, we had, as I recor, as I understand it, we, we bought the kit. It just hasn't been put together and this is-
Yes, we have, we have everything we need for it, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Zaid. Any other questions of-
Actually, I'm going to channel Uta a little bit because I think this is the first time you've addressed the township board, right? Or no, has he done this before?
Uh, second time.
Oh, second time, okay. I apologize. Well, I just want to say for myself, welcome.
Yeah.
And, and I'm grateful to have you here. I will just say for myself that the, the rec department's a difficult one in the sense that you have a very small millage compared to everything else and a lot to maintain. So just even to hear you talk about how you're trying to move around funds to get some things done gives me confidence. And while I have you both here, I know this is a little bit different than the action item, but it's related. There's a lot, a lot for you all to maintain and think about. And I will say, I think it's worth considering, not necessarily a full commission, but maybe a committee around Centennial Farm as a separate thing to think about, just to maybe try to get more volunteers, more eyes on Centennial Farm because, like I said, you all have a lot to maintain. I think folks tend to be more at Water's Edge or you see things that are happening there more. And I think just having a separate committee focused on Centennial Farm could make sure some of these things get done and, and are looked out and marshal volunteer energy because I think that's what we're going to need to maintain and make sure our public spaces are top-notch. So that's just me as personally, I just want to say that. But yeah, overall grateful to have you here and, and yeah, I'm excited about, about some of these things moving.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Zaid. So any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept an award shelter assembly bid to Baird &amp; Lawler Building Company in the amount of $9,868. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have the assembly. Thank you. Kyle?
Okay, before me for action item number six, I have a recommendation to accept an award Water's Edge and Centennial Farm Pavilion renovation bid to Kenny Gapes Handyman Service for the amount of $13,950.
Support? Okay.
The history, purpose and explanation of this action item is this project will repair damages to both Water's Edge and Centennial Farm Pavilions, which includes replacing rotten tongue and groove wood siding as well as covering with vinyl siding. Rotten wood trim will also be replaced at Water's Edge Pavilion.
Any comments or questions? This is, I think, pretty straightforward. Just some repair work that has to be done or you'll, you'll just continue to deteriorate. See, yes, go ahead.
I'll just say, I got an email that I think went to a spam filter, someone asking if Kenny Gapes was licensed and insured and my understanding is he is, so.
He is.
I just want to put that, put that out there.
Yes, he is. All right. With that, we have a motion to accept an award for Water's Edge and Centennial Farm Pavilion renovation bid to Kenny Gapes Handyman Service for the amount of $13,950. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will get the pavilions done. Thank you. There is a lot of work, I mean, at the, at the rec department, there is a lot of work, a lot of things and maintenance, if done at the proper time, and the repairs at the proper time makes it a whole lot less expensive than waiting until later. So glad we're getting this done. And if you would, Kyle, one more time.
Yes, for action item number seven, I have a recommendation to accept an award placate, placate demolition bid to Pro Excavation, Inc. for the amount of $28,000.
Support?
The history, purpose and explanation of this is this project will remove the old placate that was closed off on McComb Street. This includes calling Miss Dig, the demolition of the placate, the removal of footings, fence poles, mulch, and putting topsoil along with seed after. I, watching the recommission meeting, I learned from Chad that, you know, this is, these bids have been here for a while, but they were able to get a little bit off on this one. And again, happy to have this one getting done, too.
Yep, it's, it's been there some time. Other comments or questions on this?
Just one quick one, if I may. I believe there were three or four bids that were received for this project. I believe the original bid through Pro was right around 31, 32,000, but the, the owner came to the table and said he would donate some, some money back to the project, being that he's a community member. So that's why the, the price is 28,000 versus the 31 or 32 that was originally submitted. And that individual was a low bid even at 31 or 32.
With that, thank you, Derek. Other comments?
Just one question, Jim.
Sure.
Actually, it's for Doug. I remember some years ago when I was the chief, I camered that. And are we able to, is it still there and used? Able to remove that and, and keep it for maybe the next placate? Okay, thank you very much.
The answer to Joe's question was yes, it will be. Thank you, Doug. Anything else? All right, we have a motion to accept an award and, accept and award placate demolition bid to Pro Excavation, Inc. for the amount of $28,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We will get that done. That's been some time coming. And now that we've had the Carl and Kyle, we will move to the Dave.
Thank you. Based upon a recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, the Groseal Township Board approves an award of a contract to Fishbeck Engineering at a cost of $37,400 to perform the township's required water system reliability study and general plan update.
Support?
Thank you. This report on drinking water is required to be performed every five years. It's a state requirement that, that we comply with that. Fishbeck has performed at least the last one and they're, they're, the current contractor developing our water asset management plan. And for that reason, they were, they were recommended by the, by the commission.
And this is the report that everybody gets in the mail?
In the mail, correct.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion based upon the recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, that the Groseal Township Board approves an award of a contract to Fishbeck Engineering at a cost of $37,400 to perform the township's required water system reliability study and general plan update. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We will be getting another report in the mail when this is done. Thank you, Dave. Number nine.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments to Chapter 40, Article 1, Property Maintenance and One and Two Family Dwelling Codes.
Second? Thank you.
And this, this, this motion, this amendment to the, to the, to the building code is to bring the town, our current code, which is based on the Building Officials Code Administration, National Property Maintenance Code. That's currently, these amendments will bring it into line with the international- So, yeah, international property maintenance code, which was published first in 1998. And this just brings our building code into compliance with most other communities, make it easier to run or to enforce the building and property maintenance codes. And it's currently in place with the majority of US jurisdictions.
Other comments or questions on that? Yeah, this is just, just to bring us up, up to date. This, and as David said, BOLCA, which is the code that we're under now, has been surpassed with this international code and we're adopting it. So with that, we have a motion to approve amendments to Chapter 40, Article 1, Property Maintenance and One and Two Family Dwelling Codes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are updated. All right. We'll take, let Dave take a break here for a sec. And Joe, if you would, please, number 10.
Pull that up, sir. Okay. Recommend Township Board to promote Sergeant Kevin Counts to Lieutenant effective immediately.
Support?
Based on the current opening for lieutenant, the Groseal Police Commission held interviews for the position on September 13th, 2023. During the interview process, the commission assessed each sergeant's resume, there were three of them, experience as well as current and future leadership abilities. Based on the process, it was determined by unanimous so, I'm sorry, unanimous vote of the Groseal Police Commission to forward the recommendation that Sergeant Kevin Counts be promoted to the position of lieutenant effective immediately. This is a budgeted position that completes the command structure of the police department.
Thank you, Joe. Any comments?
I would just make one. I don't know the validity of the, you know, statements from the residents that have sent us concerned emails. And I suppose I wouldn't be an expert even if I did. What I do know is that I've always stated we have to support the commissions. I've insisted that the commissions need us to take them seriously and we need to rely on them. So unless, you know, there, something particularly damning were to come out from a member of the board or the public at this time, I'm going to continue to support the commission, who I believe are the experts in, in the police department and their leadership. So.
Thank you, Jameson.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may comment, I had, take a little bit of a different tact to it. I have known and was involved in the hiring of Sergeant Counts many years ago. I will say that Kevin and I have been on different pages of the book on a number of occasions. I don't always agree with every thing that everybody does. But Mr. Counts has right to express himself. He's not wearing a uniform when he made any of the comments that were supposedly attributed to him. And I believe he has a First Amendment right to speech. As the people calling in and the people speaking out- As the people calling in and the people speaking out through the emails have a right, I would defend, and I have defended Mr. Counts' right to freedom of speech. I certainly do not share many of the same politics with a number of people in this room, but I will defend his right to say what he believes. When he is out of uniform and he is doing his job as a citizen of this township, he has the right to speak his mind, he has the right to go on Facebook. I object to the term using, used as thug. I have never known Mr. Counts to do anything on Grozeal, and I'm not going to look into a history that has been supposedly out there for more than two decades. I interviewed Mr. Counts for his position. Mr. Counts has the right to freedom of speech, and Mr. Counts wants to run for the House of Representatives again, or for any other position, he has the right to do that. He has the right to speak his mind, he has the right to take his political action as he may deem best. History is replete with instances where people have stood up and said, "I stand for something different." John Adams was the defense attorney during the Boston massacre. 1773, there was one attorney in town that stood up and said, "These soldiers are deserving of representation." It was an unpopular position. He went on to be the second President of the United States and held as a great leader in Boston. This isn't Boston, but the same principles apply. Mr. Counts and I have had differences of opinion, he has done his work admirably as the Union representative. Didn't always like necessarily what he had to say or the positions that Kevin took, but he represented his people with zeal, honesty, and integrity. He has done the same thing as a police officer. I will support this motion proudly, because when a man or a woman stands up and speaks their mind, it's because they have the right to do that. If we look at what the comments came in tonight are saying, Mr. Counts should be denied his position because of unpopular comments or some actions that they believe may have been taken. Would they have us fire him? Nobody suggested that. We should just deny him a promotion because his is an unpopular cause that we have frequently had to sit down with some discomfort, as we do with many others. Plenty of people come to this microphone during the regular Board meetings, and it can be uncomfortable, it can be unpleasant, but by God, that is their right. It is his right to speak, and when he is doing so out of uniform, we may not necessarily disagree with it, but he has done his job and done his job well on Grozeal. I have never heard of an incident, even when there's a Michigan State Police investigation, where there has been fire that goes with that smoke. I don't believe that we should try a person in the press, we should try them with the integrity and the work experience that they have done. Mr. Counts has done an excellent job for this department. You may not like what he has to say all the time. I don't win every argument in my house, I don't even think I win half of them, but we still have the right and the obligation to listen to what somebody says. And I believe it was 13 years, Kevin, where you were the head of the Union? Am I close with that number?
I was in the Executive Board, I was president for six years.
Six years with president, Executive Board, you stood and were counted, no pun intended. I think that that is a record that I would like to see as the next chief or deputy chief. Based upon experience going forward, I have high expectations, but I think that there is nothing that I have seen or heard that would require us not to consider and recognize the work that you've done. I don't need a Commission to tell me what to do. I've seen you work, I've seen your work, I have confidence in you and your work. I intend to support this tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll say something, I want to agree with Trustee Jaeger on the Commission, in supporting the Commission. I did mention to Joe, I understand why it happened, I think there's just positions that need to be filled, you need to move these things through, but I do wish that some of the support for Sergeant Counts was televised for people to see, and so that some folks saw why that decision was unanimous, I think that would have helped with one thing tonight, that's on our side, that's on the Board's side, I want to be very clear, that's our responsibility, so that's one thing I think we could have improved in this process. And I wanted to also just give my support to what Carl said, that word thug stood out to me, too. I don't agree with everything Sergeant Counts has said or done, I don't know if we'd expect anyone to do that, but to use the word thug is too far for me, I've seen Sergeant Counts, he's always very measured in what he says and does, and that is something to be commended. I did write something tonight, because this is an easy one to misspeak on, so it's a little, I just want, I want to read through this. On at least two levels, this is an easy vote for me tonight, the Police Commission is unanimous, and I believe the Township Board is likely to be unanimous, from everything I've looked into, this is all with good reason, from everything I've seen that's been reported to me as a police officer for the Township, Sergeant Counts has been exceptional in everything that is asked to do, and more. I'll give small examples, I don't know if you were a sergeant then, but I had an issue, well, not an issue, there was a huge enormous tire in the Detroit River that I was trying to figure out how to move, and I needed help from DPS, and, and I think, I don't know if you were a sergeant then, but he, as a police officer, he helped coordinate DPS to get this huge tire out of the Detroit River, you know, and that's not something a police officer has to do, but he did it well, coordinated people well, and I was grateful for it. I know he's working a lot on grants right now, I'm excited to work with him on that, so in those things, he's done those things well, so, still, like, I feel like I have to say, because if my life circumstances were different, or even if I just wasn't on the Township Board, it's easy for me to imagine being on the other side of this vote tonight, that's part of the second level of why this still feels easy, an easy vote for me, because I'm not just a citizen anymore, I take my responsibility up here seriously to act on behalf of the entire Township, and there is a choice, and there the choice for Sergeant Counts is clear, too. The reason I want to say more about this tonight is because I think the opposition to Sergeant Counts being promoted to Lieutenant tonight is a good example of where we are in our times right now. I don't say that to separate myself from our times, but to try and talk about how difficult it is just to exist as a full human being these days, much less political beings trying to advocate for change. Anger, even outrage, is a powerful political emotion. I'll admit, sometimes I've seen it used for good. What feels like has gotten out of control to me in these times is how outrage has been weaponized to turn us against ourselves. I can list the powerful people and organizations I feel responsible for this, media companies, national politicians, and the corporations that fund them both, but at the end of the day, it's down to each and every one of us. I think this is a perfect example, however, instead of us talking about how we can better make our children feel safe in schools, or to improve trust between citizens and police officers, we've turned this into a fight between a schoolteacher and a police officer, both important public servants, to be clear, but nowhere near responsible for the things that we put both of them, we put on both of them, and the decisions around them to try and solve. I hate to say I don't necessarily have any solutions here, but I want to state some of what I'm seeing. We each have to make our own choices, and I honestly see why each person involved in all this has made the choices they made. The choices I'm going to make, the choice I'm going to try to make is to save outrage for things I feel like I can make a real difference on. As a public official, always remain open to what that can be. I'll leave it there for now, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And Carl, thank you. And you, both of you have said a lot, and I certainly support what you, what you've said, I just want to say that we, we sometimes forget what exactly we're doing here. What we're doing here is promoting an individual who's had a really great record as a police officer. What he does outside of, in his personal life, we cannot take into account when we're looking at what we're doing, and shouldn't, and shouldn't, because every individual has their right, as was said, they have their right to, to one side of the issue or the other, and if you just happen to disagree with a person's side on an issue, that's certainly not a reason not to give him a promotion within his job. And I am not aware of anything that was brought up that Sergeant Counts did as, as a police officer. It was in his personal life, which he's entitled to do, and I will also add to that, that all of the emails that came in today, I will be answering you, each one of you individually tomorrow, and explaining more in depth the position that I think the Board is going to take today, so. With that, any other comment?
Tertiary issue, I know, that's not the first, I've heard of the Police Commission meeting not being televised, so can we reinforce?
No, it was not, I don't believe it was the Police Commission meeting.
It was a special meeting.
It was a special meeting.
So can we reinforce to them that all Commission meetings should be televised? We did pass a resolution about it.
They, we do have a resolution, and part of that was, there's special meetings, there's their study session type meetings, it was up to the Commission to determine whether those would be, it wasn't every meeting they had, and they've, they invoked, evidently, invoked their, their position that they didn't want those.
But the meeting was posted and announced, so.
Sure. As it has to be, but only their, only their regular Board meetings have to be, have to be televised.
I would, I would add to your thoughts on that, Jameson, in that there were a number of people on the 2020 team that were running for office that promised transparency. I note that it wasn't just that meeting deciding and interviewing, interviewing the position of Lieutenant, but there was a prior meeting where there was consideration done for a millage that's supposed to be taking place there, and that was not televised as well. I would hope that we would have the same calls for transparency with all, as opposed just to select, and by all, I mean all of the meetings there where we look at things like millage, what is the amount, why do we need it, it's an educational process, why are we hiring this person for Lieutenant out of three people? I think the public has a right to know what is going on, and transparency is a huge issue, and this is two strikes as far as I'm concerned. I look at what went on with the millage discussion, I look at what went on with this, I don't understand it, I don't know why, I don't want to see strike three, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carl.
Jim, I got to mention something here.
Joe?
Carl, if you open the door, I got to ask, I know this is about Kevin, but Jim, we, the chairperson wished it not to be televised, and he goes by the policies of the Township of Grozeal. Carl, for you to say that, that's two strikes on us, or the people of the 2020 team, I absolutely think that's an egregious statement, and I don't know what you're getting at, but if Mr. Anderson, who's the chairman, we interviewed, it was a public meeting, he went by the Grozeal Township policies, so if you want to call it two strikes, I'm not sure what you're talking about, the 2020 team, that's got nothing to do with anything here. And I don't know who you're pointing your finger at, but I don't feel good about it, okay? So let's, let's stay on track here.
Yeah, and that's what I'm going to say.
This is about Kevin, you want to start pointing fingers, I'll run through the door like a bull.
No, you and Joe can hash this out, we're not going to hit that.
We're done, we're going to hash anything out.
Yeah, there's, we're done with that.
Yeah, we're done.
So, we have a motion. We, we have a motion to recommend Township Board approval to promote Sergeant Kevin Counts to Lieutenant effective immediately. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Lieutenant Counts. Before you do that.
Congrats. And repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm, I do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Lieutenant.
Of the Office of Lieutenant.
In and for the Township of Grozeal.
In and of the Township of Grozeal.
County of Wayne and State of Michigan.
County of Wayne, State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody, I look forward to the change in duties and new challenge in my career, I've been a police officer for a long time, so I look forward to the change in joining the management team. I want to thank the Commission for the recommendation, and thank all of you for taking the time to have a discussion, and for all of your points, and even the points of the people that, that send emails tonight. Everyone has a right to address their government, and I fully support it, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Sending Lieutenant his new badge, congratulations.
Thank you.
And his bars.
His bars. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And, Dave, you've had a little rest there, go ahead with action item number 11.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the Grozeal Township Board hereby approve the hire of Teresa McLachlan to the position of Finance Director based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached Grozeal Township offer of employment.
Support?
Over the last three, three months, it seems, seems longer, Township's conducted an extensive process in a search to locate and recruit a replacement for the position of Finance Director. Ms. McLachlan comes with experience in both the private and public sector, and has a unique skill set that provides, provides varying perspectives in financial positions of Townships and other municipalities. She currently works for the firm that conducts the Township's annual audits, and she worked previously for the firm that conducted the Township's annual audits from 1987 to 2013, and for a short period of time actually filled in for Ms. Darzniak during an extended leave of absence that she was on. Some of us on the Board are very happy to see Ms. McLachlan accept this position. And that's it. Derek, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just a couple of real quick items, I know there was some concern that was expressed earlier in the meeting, and I'm not intending in addressing all of those concerns, but I want the residents to be comfortable with the decision that's being made tonight as much as the Board is comfortable with the decisions that are being made tonight. The comment earlier was correct, the position was advertised with a certain salary range. The level of applicants that we received, and the qualifications applicants that we received, we only had probably two or three individuals that were, that met the qualifications for the position. The one applicant that we did offer the position to decided not to take the position for a variety of different reasons, but primarily because of pension level benefits. In a lot of municipal settings, there are two tiers of benefits, especially related to the pensions, the longer you're with an employer, the higher likelihood you have a better pension level, pension multiplier. Sometimes that is too much to, to overcome moving to a different employer. Grozeal Township with our new employees, we're at a 1.5% multiplier. A lot of other, more seasoned employees with other employers have 2.5 to 2.8 multipliers, so with our funding level, we're not permitted to adjust our pension multiplier, so that isn't even an option to offer that, to combat that, so there, that was a bit at play in this other situation. Ms. McLachlan comes with a tremendous amount of experience, she is going to be, actually be taking a pay cut coming to Grozeal Township, but she cited the, the job responsibilities, closer proximity to her home, and also wanting to work with the Township. She had a tremendous amount of experience with us previously, working with the auditing firm that we currently use, and she wanted to be part of this organization, she said it's actually one of the, her preferable clients, she enjoyed working with Grozeal Township above and beyond even majority of her other clients, so it's where she wanted to be and was willing to, to make that adjustment as a result. As far as the budget is concerned, there are reductions in benefit levels between the previous employee and this current employee, namely retiree healthcare, and also the pension levels that account for a large majority of the differential between the previous pay for the position and what's being offered for this position. In addition, we, after the initial search, reached out to some talent recruiters and confirmed what we knew, which was that the Finance Director of a municipality is one of the most difficult positions to fill right now. is one of the most difficult positions to, to fill right now. Um, auditors, um, CPAs, even in the private sector, it's a very difficult position to fill. Um, finance director is a bit of a unique, uh, role in that they have not only the CPA certification, but experience in dealing with municipal finance, which is quite a bit different. Um, in talking with that recruiter, um, the, uh, it was made very clear to the township that, um, it's a very difficult position to fill. Uh, pay ranges are much different than what we had originally advertised. Um, and, um, we did compare what we were paying, uh, Ms. McLaughlin to, uh, what other communities are paying for this type of position and what the market was presenting as far as what fair compensation was. And I feel very strongly that we're right in where we should be, especially for somebody of this level of qualification and experience. Um, so, um, hopefully I've addressed some of those concerns about the advertisement of the position, the likelihood of other potential candidates, the pay rate that is being offered and being recommended to the board for this individual, and then also the reasons that we didn't have success in signing, um, a different, uh, employee, uh, for this position. Um, I feel very strongly that, uh, that Teresa is gonna be a, a wonderful asset to the community. She comes with a huge resume when it comes to municipal finance and a skillset that will be very, very valuable, uh, to us. And she is still doing the same level of responsibilities as the previous finance director, which includes some benefit components. So, uh, dealing with some of our benefits and, and working with our brokers as far as coverages and, uh, working with the employees with regards to their benefits. So, um, hopefully that addresses some of these concerns. Um, and, uh, I think that with regards to pay ranges, that is something that the township is gonna be looking at, cause we do need to define that, uh, as it relates to all employees. Um, and that's something that is on the agenda to review, uh, here in the upcoming future. So, that's all I have.
Derek. Other, other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the hire of Teresa McLaughlin to the position of finance director based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached Groseal Township offer of employment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a finance director. Uh, when, when would she be reporting?
October 16th.
Approximately October 16th. She has some work she needs to finish up with Yo and Yo. Um, their tax deadline is on the 15th, so she would come over shortly after that. Um, she wanted to be here this evening, but she had a planned vacation, so she'll be introduced to the board at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, and thank you for the support. It's a very, very important position in the township and I'm sure the treasurer can, can vouch for that.
And I, I, I just want to mention too, uh, give a little shout out to the three ladies, uh, in the finance department, Andrea, Sue, and Karen, who have, uh, really stepped up to carry the ball on, uh, during this period where, where we were without a finance director. Uh, and I just wanted to say thank you to them.
And thank you ladies for that. That's, uh, you know, we're, again, we're a very small, small group. We don't have a lot of backup. Uh, in fact, most of our, our positions are one-man positions, so if once somebody goes down or leaves, uh, it is, it is challenging for us, but, uh, uh, everybody does pitch in. So, thank you ladies. All right, that brings, that brings us to an end of the action items and, uh, back to public comment. And Brian, I promise I won't forget you this time. Uh, public comment. Three minutes, uh, name and address, and I see the lovely lady in the back. How are you tonight, Kathy?
Good. How's everybody?
Good.
And congratulations. Um, the reason I'm up tonight, it's a little different than normal. Um, I received something from the Trenton Animal Shelter. Uh, we adopted a pet from them.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry. Did we vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah.
I'm losing it.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm sorry, there's been like 13 votes.
I thought we did, okay.
We're not, we're not used to this much work.
Kathy, I fully apologize interrupting.
Kathy?
Can we start the clock again?
Yeah, start the clock again, not a problem. Go ahead.
The reason I'm here tonight is, um, a little different. Um, the Trenton Animal Shelter put up a little notice for the Detroit, uh, for one of the Detroit shelters and they said they have, as you can see, pretty empty, uh, area for, um, blankets and things, where they have their animals, the cages can't fit the beds, so they need blankets. So, um, I spoke with trustee Porcelelli and our new chief, and, and we talked about helping them out. I'm willing to, uh, do a whole bunch of these, these blankets, cause I've got tons of fabric. And, uh, uh, the chief said that he would be kind enough to put out a collection box for, if you have blankets or big towels, you know, they don't have to be perfect, but the animals need something not to sleep on the, the floor. I mean, it's bad enough what's gonna happen to them. So if we could do that, um, I think that'd be just wonderful and, uh, the, the police said they would help get this stuff down there and, uh, you know, it'd be nice to help another community. I mean, we're so fortunate with the way the animals here are treated. God knows Sailor's treated like a king. We all know that. And, uh, and most people do take very good care of their animals, so I thought we could help. And if that, you know, I wanted to get the word out and also this Saturday, and I'm sure, Jameson, you'll be talking about it, there was a big event on Groseal for the veterans. Tim was a veteran. And they did a great job and the yacht club did a, just looked great. Everything was wonderful, great press. It's nice to see Groseal get that kind of notification. So again, remember the animals, drop it off, uh, there'll be a flyer going out and we'll, you know, we'll get some, uh, we'll get some stuff down there so the animals have a nice warm bed. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a dimension involved in these things, but I don't think that when they're donating, it's clear how big or small the thing has to be.
Oh, they said they have 100 large dogs, so it, uh, I'm gonna make a 48 inch, they want four foot by like 50 inches pieces of, of, um, polar fleece, but.
Four feet by four feet?
Well, actually it's more than four feet. It's usually, polar fleece is about 56 inches wide, but that's not the issue. If you can get blankets, they've got other animals, blankets and towels, anything you can donate, it would be, that they can be warm and that they can wash.
Yeah, they can put two down.
Yeah, they can do it. You know, the, you know, the animals aren't picky. They just wanna have their little butts warm.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill? Greg, were you, were you gonna be up? Up? Go ahead, Bill.
The last couple of discussions in our board, I think are demonstrating to me a kind of progress for something that I've talked about for a long time. There is a need for a type of transparency, but it needs to be coupled with, uh, uh, not only what you do, but how you do it. It has to be done respectfully. It has to be done, uh, it was explaining what the decision is and clearly how it was obtained, but also why it was done that way and acknowledge that others may not necessarily like it. I was excited a lot. I rarely want to try and interrupt your discussions here tonight, but there was a discussion here about transparency with the police commission. And I was at a police commission meeting where a, a separate issue to this came up that was very important. Uh, and in fact, the commission, in my opinion, in a way, had gotten a little bit lazy, simply because nobody who was in the public was showing up at the meetings. And in those meetings, they took opportunity to discuss things about an individual case, about somebody who may be charged with a crime who's yet innocent, but what, what do we do in this case or what do we do in that? That isn't for public affairs. Those people have a right for privacy and we need to acknowledge that when we televise a police commission meeting. So we immediately can turn around and see with the police commission, they're sort of walking a tightrope. But you are too. We can come up with, with a recent lawsuit where some of you are named and some of you aren't. But the fact of the matter is that while those who are have a right to privacy, the public as a whole has a right to full disclosure of what's going on, so that everybody should be included too. You're walking a tightrope. At least you're beginning to acknowledge that and step into it, and I want to commend you for that, but remind you that you, you haven't got a history of doing it. I want you to keep at it.
Thank you, Bill. Greg?
Greg Carmsen, 21228, East River Road. I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments about transparency and, and, uh, the, uh, interview process for positions on the township. Uh, I agree that I would like to see all the hiring of, of positions in the township that are at a management level at least, uh, be televised or recorded. And I know that there was a, a vote, uh, by the, the board, um, and in this, this current board term about this issue, and there was quite a bit of, of discussion about, um, trustees that were in favor of, of seeing all the, the meetings televised or recorded. And I, and I believe that in fact, on, there was quite of, uh, a debate on that and that there were, um, trustee Porcelelli and Jaeger and, and Jiraki were advocating for all the meetings to be televised and recorded, and that wasn't the majority on the, on the vote, uh, with the board of, of finally on the, on the issue. But I think it is time to revisit that, because my reading of the Open Meetings Act, the Michigan Open Meetings Act, is that when a public body is hiring, they do have to televi, or not televised, but they do need to have a public meeting, uh, for, for those interviews. And one of the things that I, and I've spoken about this before at, at, you know, at this, um, podium, I, I've been troubled by the, the process that has been used to at times, uh, form a subcommittee or a, a, a body, um, other than through a commission or, or the board to have interviews in, in private. Uh, sometimes in private, sometimes there, there are public meetings, but, you know, still, uh, not recorded. So, I, if, if there's a desire on the board to revisit this, I, I would welcome the board revisiting this and, and, uh, the, the finance director position, I think, was a good example. It's my understanding that the interviews were conducted in private. Uh, it wasn't a public meeting. Um, at least, you know, the, the critique of, of the police commission, they did actually follow the, the policies and procedures of the township. They did have a public meeting and they did have a meeting that which anyone who had concerns could have come to. But when you look at the finance director hire, that was actually done in a private meeting. So there was no opportunity for public input and there's no recording of that, uh, interview. So, you know, to the extent that we want to hold someone accountable for their statements during their interview process, there's, there's no way that, that the, the board would have the ability to do that because the board didn't hear the interview and there's no record of the interview. So I, I just encourage you, if there's a concern about transparency and accountability on the board, renewed concern about it, that I think the answer is to have all these management level positions, uh, either in a public meeting that's, that's a broadcast or at least recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to, uh, discussion items. Uh, Brian, ah, ha, 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 wait a minute. Brian, do you have any? I almost did it again. Uh, okay. And then, then I will go, Brian, do you have anything for the clerk's report?
No report tonight.
Ah, thank you, Brian. Uh, treasurer's report.
Thank you. Focus on this. For the month of August, township had a total of, uh, 25.8 million dollars, uh, in various, uh, investment vehicles. And these accounts for that month generated interest income of, uh, 103,100 dollars at an average interest rate of 4.0%. And again, this, this information is posted on the, uh, website on groseal.com. Groseal's summer property taxes were due September 14th and beginning September 15th, a 1% per calendar month penalty is added to any unpaid, uh, summer tax balances. And you can continue to pay your summer taxes, uh, to the township until February 29th, uh, of next year. And that can be by mail or in person at Township Hall. You can no longer pay your property taxes at Public Service Credit Union as they're not authorized or equipped to collect the, um, 1% late charges. And to date, which is as of August 31st, we've collected 90, 95.8% of the 2023 summer tax rolls and have timely made the distributions to schools in county, uh, the county and the school district, uh, as required. The Airport Commerce Park Commission, our next meeting is October 3rd at 6 o'clock. The taxiway project is continuing, although they're making quite a, quite a dent in the mounds of concrete and dirt that were, uh, on, on the west end of the airport. And, uh, and the DPS Commission, our next meeting is October 10th at 7 o'clock. And the commission is, uh, gathering information and working on our 2024 road project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Uh, trustees reports, Jameson?
All right. Uh, good evening. The zoning board of appeals will meet tomorrow. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee did not meet this month. I understand our signs for the Gibraltar Bay connector are still in production?
Yep, they were ordered. We're just waiting on delivery.
Okay. Um, so once we have those, we will move forward with, uh, probably a, a trail opening ceremony. And then, uh, I know Kathy mentioned it earlier, but this Saturday, a pretty unique event came to Groseal. Um, it's called the Step Up Swim. The organization that hosted it, Step Up Foundation, is founded by a woman named Sarah Wilkinson, um, whose husband, Chad Wilkinson, a former Navy SEAL, took his own life on his 21st year of active duty service. Um, and her goal, uh, and those, I mean, I mean, anybody who served in the military knows it can be pretty hard to receive treatment even for physical injuries, let alone mental, spiritual, emotional ones. Um, because there's a lot of stigma with it, right? Like we have, uh, you know, security clearances and other things to concern ourselves with and if it turns out I'm not mentally stable, well, then you can't have a security clearance. Well, then you can't really be in the service anymore, you know, so. I imagine it's a pretty similar stigma with maybe the fire and police departments and stuff like that too, right? So, Step Up Foundation, uh, works to link up service members and veterans with help on the civilian side that is through a fully encrypted 256-bit system so that people inside their organization wouldn't know that they were seeking that care. Uh, it doesn't really circumvent the system, it just gives them the opportunity to go one more place for help. So, um, PJ Ramsey, uh, local team guy here, uh, put this together about two months ago. He's like, you know what, I'm gonna raise some money, uh, for Sarah's foundation and I'm gonna swim to the lighthouse. Well, some of the other, uh, you know, veterans around the island heard about this and they ended up putting together an actual event. Um, it was 33 participants, 10 kilometers of swimming, about four hours, um, and, uh, went all the way from Groseal Yacht Club, which was a very gracious host for the event, all the way out to the lighthouse, which is owned by a guy named Daryl Jameson now. Um, I guess he bought the lighthouse and he's gonna make it an Airbnb, so that's cool. Um, raised about $91,000, uh, and it was really kind of, it was the kind of event you could really only have in a place like Groseal, right? Like Lansing or Grand Rapids or, you know, Traverse City can't, they just can't host something like this, right? It's, it's the geography, it's the community and everything else. So, uh, it's just a really great event, really great to have the community out there. Multiple agencies participated. I know I saw the chief and deputy chief out there. Uh, you know, Joe was out there. Um. Not swimming. Joe was not swimming. Um, but it was a great event and I just appreciate the community pulling together for that one, so. And that, uh, concludes my report.
Thank you, Jameson. Carl?
I have the pleasure of, uh, sitting on two commissions. Greenway's open space, we had to dump the junk on Saturday. Uh, we have our next meeting, the first Tuesday of October with more figures and information, but I do understand from manager Kime, John reported there were 15 of the large dumpsters there, 13 that were full, including one that was all metal recyclables and the other two were, uh, all metal recyclables, and the other two were partially filled. There was, as he indicated, somewhat slower this time, but steady. And I promise to have better figures and numbers at our next meeting, which, again, is the first Tuesday in October. I would also point out that Wayne County is doing their household hazardous waste collection. With our Dump the Junk, you're limited in terms of the materials that you could bring because of the hazardous nature of some of the materials. So Wayne County is having yet another, and I believe it is the final hazardous household waste collection on October 21, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Again, October 21, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Wayne County Community College, 21,000 Northline Road, Taylor. Again, 21,000 Northline Road, Taylor. The specific flyer and information is up on the township's website. It is under the community calendar. Please check it out. Those things that you were not able to get rid of with the regular Dump the Junk or with your home trash collection, please note that some of these items that are acceptable include household paints, stains, dyes, floor wax, floor care products, carpet cleaner, furniture polish, bathroom cleaners, stain removers, solvents, pharmaceutical waste that is not controlled substances only, non-controlled substances, nail polish, glue, fertilizer, lawn and garden chemicals, antifreeze, motor oil, gasoline, auto batteries, and dry cell batteries, fluorescent bulbs of all types. You can also dispose of fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, mercury thermometers, thermostats, elemental mercury, and electronics recycling, computer CPUs, monitors, printers, scanners, keyboards, and mice, cell phones, fax machines, copiers, and televisions, all things that you can dispose of on that day that you can't dispose of either at Dump the Junk or in your regular household trash. Again, 21,000 Northline Road, October 21, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If past history is any indication, you should probably get there earlier because some of the lines, particularly at Westland, have stretched for a number of blocks, and they've even gone on for wait times, I understand, as long as an hour. So get there early and try and recycle those things. Second commission I sit on is the Fire Commission, and I just want to thank everybody on this board and everybody within the department for having a hand in Robert Roscoe's promotion to Fire Marshal. It is a wonderful thing for the community. Bob has got an awful lot of things that he's going to be learning and doing. But everybody in the department, very happy to have you on board, Bob. Very happy and look forward to working with you. When Kevin Langley left, left a big void in the department. I think that there was a tremendous amount of work that Kevin did that was unheralded. So I'm sure you're going to be picking up a lot more than just the basics of the Fire Marshal. It's a responsible position, very responsible. And I want to thank those people that have supported you. I have heard from several people within the department, and I'm not going to mention any names, but people that I've come to really trust and value their opinion. It was not an easy decision to make. But Bob, you've been there a long time with this department. I want to say thank you and welcome aboard. The final note that I would have tonight, they, life has ups and downs. And our daughter was married on Saturday, and it was one of the high points in any parent's life. I get on Facebook on Sunday, and I learn about the death of one of our local residents, Hunter Polgar. And you look at the one peak, and then you look at the valley. I could not imagine what that family is going through. I just want to extend to them, on part of the community, on the part of this board, our condolences. I don't think anyone in that position can fully understand, but I think it's all important for each and every one of us to think about what they have, what they're going through, and offer them whatever support we can, either in person or whatever expressions you feel are important. It's a terrible tragedy. It's a terrible thing to happen. And I think all of us should offer them our condolences and support at this time. I also want to thank the members of public safety that spent so much time and efforts to do what they could to make this a better turnout. So again, to the entire community, and particularly that family, my condolence personally, and I believe the entire board shares in that. And thank you, gentlemen and ladies, again, for the work that you did. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Carl. Kyle?
Thank you. Thanks, Carl, for mentioning Hunter. I want to extend my condolences, too. It's very clear what an impact he had on so many people in our community. So not just, I don't extend just my condolences to the family, but to everyone who's feeling lost because of that. We live in a beautiful community, but there's also hazards with what's around us, and it's an important reminder of that. So I'll say that. I sit on the Planning Commission. Planning Commission does meet next Monday, I believe, October 2nd, 7:00 PM. We will be discussing a lot split and a planting and a conservation easement, but there will also be an update on the master plan process. I'm very grateful to the board for approving the company that's going to lead our master planning process. I'm really excited for that process to be moving forward. So the Planning Commission hasn't been meeting as much since I've been up here, but now very well will be. And I really encourage the public to follow this, to participate in it. I think it's a really great way to kind of give forth a vision for what our community should look like and how we should be together. So I'm hopeful that we'll do that well. A couple of other things. I was really grateful to the Township Board for appointing Joe to the McCloud Community Advisory Group. I watched that meeting that happened, I think, I want to say two Thursdays ago now. And I think you all know I pushed really hard after they constructed that railroad across West Jefferson. It was very clear that calcium hydroxide pollution was there and let out because of that construction. And I think because of the pushing, not just me, but a lot of people did. That's very clear now. Eagle has admitted it, and not only that, but is now more on it. Because of that construction, further pollution migrated north of the property into more public space. And Crown Enterprises, Ruin Family Company, seemed to want to absolve themselves of responsibility of that. But because of pushing, and folks and many others, Eagle was there to push back and ask for them to take corrective action, which includes pumping out some of that pollution from their side of the property. And in addition to that, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has gotten involved, along with the Wayne County Health Department. They're going to start putting up signs in that area to let people know that, hey, if you get some of this white chalky stuff on your body, to wash yourself off, because that stuff is some pretty nasty stuff. If you leave it on for too long, it'll hurt your skin. If you get in your eyes, it could blind you. So, you know, that stuff's just all out there in the open. You can go by there and just walk in and not know it. But I'm glad they're putting up signs there that that's going to be there. So again, grateful to the Township Board for getting Joe on there. That's the sort of, you know, having someone on there is going to allow us to advocate on those things a little bit better. And yeah, I'll conclude my report there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Joe?
Good evening. As you can see, the police department has been busy filling positions. They are still trying to fill a dispatch position, a police officer position, and obviously the promotion tonight, Sergeant Kevin Collins to Lieutenant, congratulations. I have a few more items, bear with me, to follow up on. The Army Corps of Engineers and their program down here to clean up the old Groseal Navy Base, their yearly meeting will be in October. It was supposed to be in September, but they were having problems getting people together from Louisville, that's where they come from, back up here. And they're going to have a meeting in this room. Excuse me. It'll be in October. The starting time they want is 6 o'clock, but they have not given me the exact date, unfortunately. I mean, we're getting into October now. So Brian, if possible, when they get ahold of me, if I could contact you, whatever you feel, or Derek, the best way to get it out. They really want to see more participation, they told me, which is kind of amazing to me. But I'd like to see, I know there's a lot of people in the south on the island who are very concerned in what they've done, what they're going to do, and are they done? So, and again, we're still trying, and with the help of Kyle and I for the last year, and I've been on this for almost five years, of getting these athletic fields tested for lead contamination. So this meeting might be our last chance. So anyway, when I get it, Brian, if you could, I don't know the best way to push it out, if you feel, you know, with Facebook and maybe, I don't even know if you can put it out on the, oh, go ahead.
Well, once you get it, we'll discuss, depending on what, you know, what it is, how they're planning on holding the meeting. Is it by Zoom? Is it not by Zoom? I know, okay, they are going to for sure be live.
Be interlaid. That's why they're having trouble getting here. I'm sorry, getting everybody together from Louisville to come here. And that's why they haven't given me the date yet. But we will give you that as soon as we get it. Another thing, the leadership and retention program that I've been working on, Derek and I have a meeting tomorrow morning at 11:00. And we're going to go over some things, just to make sure that some of the things in this program are congruent with our department, I'm sorry, our township policies and procedures and our management handbook. So we're going to continue on this, and hopefully what I envision is it will come to the board as a whole product. And I think it's going to help make it a better work environment for all the managers and everybody here at the township. Next thing is on the McCloud Steel Citizens Action Group. Kyle's correct, I have started on that. And I want to say something about the calcium hydroxide. It was Kyle and Mr. Kamerson, who's in the audience tonight, I found out that they were the ones that contacted the group first. And what people need to know is, there is a person that represents the EPA, which is federal, and Eagle, which is state, which used to be the DNR. And they are working on that. They believe that this calcium hydroxide, which is very caustic, it has a high pH level. And unfortunately, there was a gentleman who went through there on a motorcycle. It splashed up, and he got some minor burns on his legs. So they have put up signs, I believe. They're already up, Kyle. I think that the signs are up now.
Excellent.
I'm not going to get too far into that. I'm not sure what the signs are going to do to warn you that, you know, you're not supposed to really be walking through that area. What they found is it's coming from the south side and coming through the ground up on the north side and by the street level. And that's why there's that pooling of the street. But Kyle is correct. Without these gentlemen, maybe some others also notifying them, they're really, I don't want to say that Crown or someone else, I don't want to say Crown. Let's go back on that one. They weren't really looking into it, but now they actually are looking into it. We want to make sure that the reason for this group is to make sure that it is a conduit for the cleanup process, that we get the correct information, that I give you people and the people out there listening the correct information, and that the cleanup continues. And things of this nature, you think it's something small, but this calcium hydroxide, apparently, they had a gentleman speak at the meeting, and it is pretty serious, and it can be very serious. So again, thank you to the board for putting me on that. I think it's important that we continue to at least see what McCloud Steel is, I call them McCloud Steel still, or the Crown property is doing, what they're going to be doing, and how the cleanup goes. So with that, I have just one more. I'm sorry, I've taken some time up here. But I'm still working on the Wayne County Bridge speed limit issue. We are trying to do everything we can for the people of Groseal and the county. We want to look at longevity. We want to look at public safety. And I mean, it's been five months. I have talked with Mr. Candrevis a few times personally. I've talked him with emails. Derek and I have contacted him, and we're kind of running out of time here. So I'm not sure what they're doing here at the county, but I'm going to continue on it. And I guess the only way is I'm going to see if he gets back on this last email. And if not, then of course I'm going to have to do what I have to do in trying further this. But we're trying to do it for the longevity, the safety of the bridge until it gets fixed. And unfortunately, it may not, the repairs won't be starting according to the head of bridges, the end of '25, beginning of '26. So that's why we're doing that. So that is it. I think I've hit everything. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Derek?
Just a couple of quick items this evening. Just want to remind any interested candidates, we do currently have an assistant recreation director position that is posted. The deadline for that is the end of this week. If you are interested, it's advertised a lot of different locations. Probably the easiest one is to go to Groseal Township's website. Under our employment link, there is a copy of the job description, and also the information on how to apply. So please feel free to take a look at that if you have interest. Contractors for the township are currently doing chip seal work that started today. They're working over on East River Road from the Mesa Island to Hickory Island. From there, they will be going to Dallas Drive and then down to Bridge Road. The hope is to have all that work completed by this week, but it is weather dependent. Just want to let residents know, Hickory Island is being done by the association, not by the township, but they've contracted with the same vendor that we're using. But that is not a township-paid portion of the work. So, and once again, that is a maintenance item. That is not a resurfacing. That is a preventative maintenance method. So it is not intended to give you a new surface just to protect what is there. Part of that work also will be the fogging of the shoulder on East River Road north of Manchester, which was authorized by the board and recommended by BPAC some months ago. So that'll be taking place hopefully this week as well. With regards to Meridian Road Bridge, I did have a phone call this morning, actually this afternoon, I'm sorry, with Wayne County with regards to the various projects that they are doing within the township currently. They do anticipate still completing that bridge by the fall of 2023. They also said that they intend to complete the resurfacing of Groseal, I'm sorry, of Meridian from Groseal Parkway down to Island yet this fall. Based upon the previous schedule I received, it looks like they're probably about a month, month and a half behind on the original bridge construction schedule. But that's just based upon the original schedule that was provided as compared to the current progress. That is not from the county directly, but just taking a look at the abutment progress, that looks like where we're still at or where we're at. But they do still say that that should be completed by the fall of 2023. And then the last item I have, BPAC was able to secure some time ago a bicycle repair station, which we had talked about and tried to locate over, I think, the past couple of months. We were able to locate it, and it is currently being installed in front of the public safety building. So take a look for that. I believe the concrete was poured last week, and the installation of that bicycle repair station will be installed shortly after, I believe, hopefully this week yet. And what it is, is basically a set of tools and stuff that are on a post, that if you have some bicycle repairs that are needed as you're traversing the bicycle paths, you can stop there and make those repairs. So with that, that's all I have for this evening, unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just an update on the water main with the Meridian Road Bridge. Is there any update there?
Yeah. So our lawsuit was filed with regards to the damage that was caused to the main. The, Toby, who is the contractor, did have 30 days to respond to that. That 30-day response and an extension was not received. So as of right now, there has been a motion for default submitted to the court, but that is the latest I have with regards to that. As the township, we are soliciting vendors for the, for the repair of that main, because regardless of what happens with the lawsuit, we are going to have to repair or replace it. Some of that was contention upon the bridge replacement, the sheet piling being removed, because right now it is in conflict with that main. And the contractor is in process of removing the sheet piling that is necessary to be removed before we can repair or replace that main. So that is all in process. Once that sheet piling is removed, we'll probably end up cammering that line to see whether or not we can connect to the existing main and pull a new piece through, or if the damage is significant enough where if we tried to connect to it and pull it through, it would tear and completely, you know, sever the line. So there is a bit of engineering that we have to do to figure out the best method for that. But like we saw earlier today with a lot of our bids that we received, finding contractors to do that work, it's very difficult, especially this time of the year, because a lot of their work has already been booked through the construction season. So there's a lot in process right now. And soon as something is definitive, as far as either the lawsuit or a repair, I'll be sure to let the board and the public know.
Eric, just one question?
Yes.
Just so I understand, the repair process and timing is not predicated upon the lawsuit. The lawsuit is separate from the repair timing?
Correct. Correct. Correct.
And if I just, I heard you correctly, Toby basically hasn't responded, but they did move the sheet piling to be able to do the work? Does that sound right?
The removal of the sheet piling doesn't have anything to do with the repair. They just, they were done with that abutment on that side. So the north side wasn't necessarily in conflict. The south side was. The south side abutment has been completed. So now they're pulling the sheet pile because it's no longer necessary for that portion of the bridge construction.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
I just have a couple of things. The DDA meeting, which would be this Thursday, has been canceled. But I would encourage everybody, if you haven't been down McComb, to go down McComb and see, we put up five or six new sculptures. And I think the last one was actually put up Sunday. And that, along with our murals, I think just makes, it makes your McComb look a lot better. I know there's going to be some disagreement with some of the sculptures. And that is what art's all about. What exactly is that? But I do think as a whole, DDA has done a good job with that, and I encourage you to go up and down. I do want to again say that for the people who did send in emails regarding the promotion, I will be answering you tomorrow, each one of you individually. And, you know, we can always look at our, and at everything, including our policies and procedures, but we did have in there that all board meetings of commissions had to be on TV, which has pretty much been adhered to. As far as, as far as dealing with interviews, if the majority of the commission is there, then it does, it does have to be open to the public. Nothing has to be on TV. There's nothing in open meetings that deals with TV or streaming or anything, but it has to be an open meeting. If it's less than a quorum of a commission, and a lot of these are not done, in fact, the police commission's the only one I know that does interviewing for jobs as a whole, they do not have to be in an open meeting. So there are those nuances, and you have to make sure what you're talking about on this. So, and quite truthfully, transparency means a whole lot of different things to different people. Some means it covers everything. Some means it, you know, it's, it's, it's an open meeting. It doesn't mean it has to be on TV. There'd be disagreement on that. So we have to watch that. It's like everything else we face today. There's multiple sides to whatever we talk about. So that is all I have. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.